And welcome to this session of council with Quispam Sis. I want to offer my congratulations on behalf of council to the KBHS Crusaders football team, who advanced to the Provincial AAA Championship game on Saturday versus St. John High. It was a hard fought battle, but in the end, the Greyhounds prevailed, 27-24. I had the chance to wish the team well as they boarded the bus at the early, uh, early in the afternoon on Saturday, and Counselor Miller attended the game and provided me with play-by-play text updates throughout the entire contest. My blood pressure went way up, and what a game it was. I want to offer my heartfelt thanks to head coach Mike Manguso and the other members of the coaching staff for their commitment to our youth in the community of Quispam Sis. They're all true leaders. To the impressive group of young men who left it all on the field in their pursuit of a title, congratulations on an outstanding season. You have done yourselves, your school, and your community proud. Congratulations. I also have a few reminders to share with our residents this evening. The National Emergency Alert System will be tested in New Brunswick tomorrow, Wednesday, at five to eleven. There will be an alarm on television, radio, and wireless devices. Alert Ready has been designed by emergency management officials to enhance preparedness and response times in times of crises. We will not be having a formal tree lighting ceremony in the Arts and Culture Park this year, but the Holiday Dreamland display will be back once again. The park will be illuminated by the middle of next week, and we invite everyone to have a peek at the wonderland that we have created. Our staff work tirelessly and they do an exceptional job. The KV Santa Claus Parade is scheduled for the evening of Saturday, November twenty-seventh. The parade will begin at Kennedy Cases Valley High School at six o'clock and make its way along Hampton Road to the Mar Road intersection. Everyone attending is urged to wear a mask and maintain social distancing. We hope the parade and the lights in the park will help bring a bit of joy to our residents as the Christmas holiday season begins. I am looking for approval of the agenda. It's been approved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. I will ask for the treaty acknowledgement. Counselor Bigger, would you like to do the treaty acknowledgement this evening? I have one here.
There we go. Thank you. Yes, I'd be pleased to. Thank you, Your Worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispam Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Wolastukik, Malacite, and Mekmak people, whose ancestors, along with Pasamaquadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen-hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. I'm asking for disclosure of interest. There are none. We will move to item number five, presentations. There are none. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting. Could I please have a motion on that? It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, there are none. Motion carried, seven-zero. Onto item eight, unfinished business. Eight A, December eighteenth of eighteen, uh, twenty-eighteen. Counselor Carrie Luck requests for an update on Queensberry Drive traffic calming. I see that the Director of Engineering is not here this evening. We can defer that to the December seventh meeting and get the full update on that. Counselor Luck, if that meets with your approval. Thank you. Pardon me? Okay, there is a motion on the table. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Wor- I'd like to move the Counselor Luck's request for an update on the Queensberry Drive traffic calming be referred to the Director of Engineering Works to update council at the December seventh, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, there are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven-zero. Item eight B, Counselor note Donovan's request for update on Hillhurst Drive, request for speed limit reduction, fifty kilometers per hour down to forty kilometers per hour, originally introduced by Counselor Miller in April of twenty-twenty-one. And once again, the Director of Engineering is not here. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I'd just like to say that we did miss a, a, a section. It was Mike Murphy, Queensberry Drive, his comments regarding the traffic mats, and if you'd like, I can make that motion, that Mr. Murphy be thanked for his comment and that his email be referred to the Engineering Department for consideration under the Queensberry Drive traffic calming review process.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, there are none. Motion carried, six-zero. Item eight C, response from Minister Jill Green. Oh, sorry? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on eight B. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to move that my item be referred to the Director of Engineering for the December seventh, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan to move item eight B, and it is seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. Item eight C, October fifth, twenty, uh, twenty-one, response from Minister Jill Green, DTI, read the town's request for rapid flash beacon at crosswalk speed reduction zone, Hampton Road near Kennedy Cases Valley High School. Counselor Mike Bigger. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I put a motion forward that staff monitor the KBHS-KUBC crosswalk at the Hampton Road to determine the effectiveness of the rapid flash beacon use, and if necessary, report to council if a further control such as a reduced speed zone is warranted.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck. Mr. Kennedy, did you have something to say on that before the vote?
I did, Your Worship. I just wanted to mention that since the staff report was written last Wednesday, and in the second paragraph, Director Lozier says we can install a modified set of rapid flash beacons. Those have been installed, so they are up and functional. I just wanted to draw that to council's attention.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bigger, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I just wanted to say that I was really delighted to find this in the package and for this meeting, and I just really commend the Director of Engineering Works and what others of her stuff, whatever other staff were a part of being able to expedite this. We got the word back, of course, from the Minister of Transportation, sort of saying, you know, bouncing the ping pong back our way, saying, "Go ahead, whatever, but it's on you." And I really appreciate the effort made to, uh, on, of course, it's on behalf of the kids and the safety of the, of the kids at the school, but I'm sure there will be a lot of parents who will be very relieved to see that that's been erected and that we could now just sort of monitor if there is any need to try to, you know, lower the speed as well, but speed zone, but just really appreciate the efforts made to try to, you know, MacGyver, as they say, our way through that and be able to change a couple things and to the degree that it was part of maybe a, I, I believe it was scheduled to be a crosswalk, uh, flashing crosswalk beacon to be installed on a trail, if I'm not mistaken. So there was some rejiggering there, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate everyone's effort on that, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I do have a question about the letter submitted by Minister Jill Green of Transportation and Infrastructure. In her email, she alluded that, uh, the responsibility and accountability, um, for such things, when a provincial highway is running through a municipality, it looks like it has changed since last November. Um, and I know we have something else pending in regards to the Godola Point arterial with the same concern, and I'm just wondering if, based on this email, if the motion that was put forth on September the seventh, looking at the same kind of thing as exploring kind of safe passage across the Godola Point arterial. And I know that, um, the Director of Engineering and Works is not here tonight, but I'm wondering if there's a way of capturing that so it can be put on our agenda for next meeting, so he can address, um, that situation or that, um, that question, because it sounds like from, um, Minister Jill, Jill Green's letter, things have changed over the last year in terms of what we can and can't do on provincially designated highways that run within our town. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. And just, uh, further to that, um, Counselor Luck, your, your request has been noted, and also just a reminder to all drivers, pedestrians, uh, certainly there's a responsibility to look both ways when crossing the street, for traffic to slow down in school zones, and please drive with due care, particularly as we enter the snowy season with snowbanks and so forth. So moving on, number nine, correspondence. Recommendations from Nominating Committee, read town, sorry, oh, net zero, sorry. Uh, item number D, Net Zero Energy Pilot Project, Longwood Lagoon, additional funding request, staff report from the Director of Engineering and Works. Counselor Bigger.
Yes, Your Worship, thank you. I would move that the town reallocate an additional thirty thousand dollars to the two thousand twenty-one wastewater net zero energy pilot program and that the identified funds be allocated from the twenty-twenty-one year-end surplus, and if funds are not sufficient, the funds be directed from utility capital reserves.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, there are some questions here. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Worship. I'm, I'm in favor of doing this, um, and I do have some questions for the future ones that we do, because if you do the quick math, we pay a little about, we pay about ten cents per kilowatt hour. It's, it's, anyways, once you get over a certain number, so it's about ten cents, so each one of these will save two thousand dollars a year, and right now we're paying forty-seven thousand dollars to install it, so. Part of the installation would be for the, the array, but there'd also part for the actual electrical and savings like that, so, um, my question will be, would be, and, and when the director engineer is here, it's like, again, I'm, I'm good for this one right now, but if we gotta add forty-nine more, that this should go to an RFP, and, and my question would be if all forty-nine would still cost forty-seven thousand each, or how much are they? Because, you know, I know solar's efficient, but quick math, it takes twenty-three years for them to pay back, and, and I don't think a solar power, power panel can last for twenty-three years without being replaced. And you also got other issues about the waste of the solar panels, I mean, what I've read about it, so. Uh, those are questions, I, I'm good for this one for now, but when we get into, if it works and we're gonna add forty-nine more, uh, is, is, when you, you're offsetting here, but what happens with the other things, the lithium batteries, what is the, the, the timing? How long do these last? Those are just questions for, for later on, and, um, like I said, with the quick math, when I looked up what NB Power charges us, I get two thousand bucks per, per array that we save, so, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Uh, I'm going to go to the treasurer, Ms. Brandon.
Uh, through you, Your Worship. Um, so, yes, there's definitely cost savings when you do buy more, and so we kind of have looked at this, but with this being the pilot project, that is kind of what we're going with, there, you know, potential- There, you know, potentially would have been an opportunity to get a three-pack panel. Would have been upwards of $88,000 for the three. Um, so there definitely is savings when you buy more, um, in bulk. And this is a local company within Kispam Sis, who, uh, everyone kind of directed us to them. So for a pilot project, this is kind of the way. But if we do go out, it will be a more robust plan.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, my question is also on, um, how, um, companies being selected without it going to an RFP. We've had this discussion before about, um, having the opportunity for other companies to be able to be involved in, um, whether it's a pilot project or not. So I would, um, I guess respectfully ask of why we're not engaging other, um, companies that could maybe be looking at this. I know that, um, there seems to, MB, is it the MB Power officials directed you to this company? But I still think that in, um, that there should be opportunities here for other companies to look at this because it's obviously going to be, um, further, if we engage in it, um, further down the line, it's gonna be quite a, um, a tender. And so I would, um, that's what I would ask on this. So I won't be able to support that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Ms. Brandon.
Um, through you, Your Worship. So I will say this is just the, the pilot project. This is in no, in the end piece of this. Yes, MB Power officials, when, um, uh, Mr. Lojé was going and trying to research this, that is where they said you have the best company within your backyard to be able to, to go to. So yes, they did send us to them. When we look at this in totality, as the build-out of this farm, it would be an RFP, it would be a tender, it would be the whole process. This is, you know, the cost of doing the pilot project, um, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. It was moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that the town allocate the additional $30,000 for the 2021 wastewater net zero program. On the vote, please vote now.
Your Worship, uh, motion carried, 5-1. Nay, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Motion carried, 5-1. Nay, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Thank you. Correspondence, number 9A. Recommendations from the Nominating Committee, read town committee appointments for PAC and the Arts Center. Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I'd move that council accept the nominating committee's recommendations to appoint, uh, Mark Guest to the Planning Advisory Committee for a three-year term, replacing John Groden effective February 1st, 2022, and expiring January 31st, 2025. And to extend, um, Lisa and Chicoloni's appointment as the town's representative on the St. John Arts Board for an additional two-year term effective February 1st, 2022, and expiring January 31st, 2024.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, 6-0. Item 10 is bylaws. There are none. Item 11, new business, RFP, Recommendation of Award for Geotechnical Services, 2022. Staff report from Mark Morrison, Engineering Manager. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Your Worship. Based on the bids submitted and the subsequent review, the council award the Geotechnical Services, 2021, 2020, or 22, to the low bidder, Brunswick Engineering Limited, for the total bid price of $23,205 plus HST.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, I see none. Motion carried, 6-0. Item 12, reports. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, yes, Your Worship. I've noticed that the, um, annual dues for U M, um, U M N B, I always struggle with that, have, um, increased. I, I just wondered if you saw that, Chris, uh, to the town treasurer.
Uh, yes, I did, and we were aware of that and had increased our budget, um, for association dues for the year for 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, please vote now.
And what's the motion?
Oh, sorry. I, I apologize. That's my misreading here. I didn't move my screen along. All right, so we are on reports. Uh, we just had a question about U M N B and the membership fee, uh, going up, and that was responded to. There was money provided in the budget for that. Going on, we have BCDNE. Counselor Thompson.
I would make a motion to receive and file all reports, please.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Luck to receive and file the reports. Motion carried, 6-0. This is arising from Committee of the Whole. There is none. Hoping that everybody's week ends in joy with something joyful for yourself and something joyful for others. Looking for a motion to adjourn, please. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, 6-0. Have a great evening, everyone. Good rest of your week.